The vote is exactly the same.
We're going to go ahead and move forward. Councilman Lutz, if you wouldn't mind reading the open public act statement for me, please.
This meeting is called to go into the provisions of the open public meeting law. This meeting of April 10th, 2018 was included in a list of meetings' notices to send to the newspapers of record and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as required notice under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice has been available to the public and his own file at the office of municipal clerk.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And I know it's not on there, but we will stand for the place.
I'll put it on there.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. All right. So as everybody can see, Attorney Wenner changed his look for the evening. Attorney Joe, how do you say your last name?
Salvador.
Salvador. Attorney Joe Salvador is with us this evening. We can move forward with the roll call, Vicky.
Councilman Lutz?
Here.
Councilman McVey?
Here.
Councilman Davis?
Here.
Council Vice President Dejera Lamang. Council President Fulfer.
Here.
Okay. We will go ahead and move forward with public comments. Does anybody have any public comments? This is where you do come up and speak. David, Mr. Morrisette, I'd like to just go ahead and approach the podium. You know the drill. Name and address.
You all can probably hear me, I think. It's not a big crowd. David Morrisette, by Fairview Heights, Phillipsburg, New Jersey. I would like to ask all the members. Now, the council members and Vicky all did a great job last time of speaking into their mics. Attorney Wenner actually put his mic away and he was hard to hear. So I ask all of you to please continue speaking into your mics and that really helps people in the audience to hear. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is discussion sort of open down in discussions since it's a work thing or do we have to...
It would be discussion amongst council members only, so if you wanted to discuss something that's on the agenda, I'd ask that you get up now, Karen.
Ricky Sexton, 110 Bowman Street, Phillipsburg.
But you can turn your mic on. I just want... There you go.
I'm here on behalf of the Firtown Falcons. We had spoken to the mayor about Walters Park Field being done for the kids. Still to date, there's nothing been done up there. The kids have a game next Thursday night at Walters Park. We have nowhere to play and on our schedule it says Walters Park for our first game. He promised us that we can use the field if we have volunteers up there and do the work. We had seven guys up there Saturday morning for three hours waiting. We marked the field with chalk, everything. He never showed up for us.
Okay. Rick, just so you're aware, I spoke with the mayor on multiple occasions this morning where he had initially declined and stated that he'd spoke with somebody at the DPW and said that he wouldn't be able to give it to Firtown this year. I do not believe there's any validity to that statement because I used to coach and I was there last year during the All-Star Game. The mayor's argument was that there were no base plugs. It was only for the juniors, not the majors. However, I'm sure you know, you coached as well last year, the field has plugs for all three levels. You just have to dig them up. I'm sure everyone's familiar with how the plugs work with the bases. And then he had said that it would be overly burdensome and highly technical to do a mount. And I'm going to tell you exactly what I told the mayor today. We will have volunteers. I will round people up and we will have that field ready for the Falcons' home game this next week.
Thursday night, yes.
It is Thursday night?
Yes.
Okay. So this Thursday night?
No, next Thursday.
Next Thursday night. I will round volunteers up and we will make sure that we are there en masse to make sure that that field is ready. That is, of course, if the DPW does not already do that. I cannot speak for them. They may already be out there.
Well, I went around today. They did all, every field besides Walters Park.
They did mark it, though. Was it marked on Saturday?
I marked it myself.
That was you who marked it?
I marked it myself with white spray paint.
Yes.
I did that myself.
Okay. I did notice that the bases were marked, so...
Me and Matt Scarborough did.
Okay. I believe, Councilman, I mean, if you guys aren't doing anything, it's not really a quorum if we're out there fixing up a field for the kids.
It'll be 80 degrees Saturday, isn't it?
You know, I know Councilman Davis, I know that you've coached track, but if you are available, it's a park, bring the kids out. I got an eight-year-old, they can play. But I would like to do whatever we possibly can to get these kids out there on that field. Like I stated in the last council meeting, the Firtown Falcons have always played at Walters Park. So I'd like to maintain that, I guess heritage, if you will, that they used it. So if we can, Councilman Lutz, if you're available, I know that we will make sure that that happens. Your schedules are already placed with the league, right?
I have the schedule up.
So they're sending people to Walters Park because that is your home field.
Yes.
And if they change it, it's kind of like similar to basketball. They give you a hard time.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's not going to happen.
They told us we changed it the last minute. Our organization will be fined.
Okay. Well, we definitely don't want you to be fined. I mean, I think it's, the consensus here of council is that we want to be able to see the kids play. You have my promise. We will be out there this week. I'd like to do it Saturday if any...
I can have one to volunteer on Saturday, too.
Are you available Saturday, Councilman?
I'm good Saturday at about 1:00. Then if I can bring all the kids down to the Pink concert, they'd probably enjoy that. So that's where I'll be going after that. But I'll be at the crack of dawn up until 1:00 P.M.
I'm going to go to the Pink concert with Councilman McVey.
I will be there. I'll be up at the field, I'll help you. A couple volunteers.
Excellent. Thank you. We will make sure we can do it.
What time is it, like, Saturday?
You want to do it 1:00 on Saturday?
No, I'm, you gotta leave at 1:00.
Yeah.
Mr. Sexton, I am leaving for Pink. I actually work at the arena where she's playing, so I'll make that clear. But I'm good up until 1:00. That's right. I'll be at the crack of dawn up until 1:00.
Councilman McVey, we make no judgments on your music taste.
I have to agree with Councilman Davis.
So what, 9:00, 8:00?
8:00?
8:00, 9:00?
8:00 on Saturday morning. You will see this council there and we will ready to help you.
I'll be there, too. Thank you, guys.
You're very welcome. Okay. Is there any other public comments?
Just because it's easy. I'm Joe Minor. I live at 394 Main, South Main Street, Phillipsburg, partial two. Having nobody charging for parking on the street really works wonders for all the poor people like me who park there now and then for free. There's also something you might want to throw into your exception for the parking On Sunday, when I tried to park in my parking lot and I have a paid, I was shamed more by Lori into buying a parking permit for the last two years. So I have one. And then sometimes on Sundays, I can't park in the lot because of the church. Either give them a waiver or charge them a $10 for the year fee for parking Sundays. You know, it's a suggestion to get around it because if I can't complain there, I'll probably park in the street. It's Sunday, you won't kick at me, and then I'll move. But the idea is I should be able to park there. And now, I solved this a couple of years, more than a couple of years ago. I went to the priest and I said, "Leave two parking spots for the people that have permits." And lo and behold, the parishioners left two. There would always be, I'd come back there while they were having mass and there'd be a couple parking spots. They actually followed through with it. It worked. So something, maybe something very informal would work, but if you, which means the best thing might be is just plain, don't enforce it on Sunday. Then the church people can park there.
Thank you.
Hi. Amel Berson, 94 Bowman Street, Phillipsburg. I have some questions about the social media policy. I was just kind of rushing through it because I just saw it today. I tried to look online to see if the agenda was posted and it wasn't posted. It would have been nice to be able to look at this ahead of time, but I just wonder whether, is this social media policy, was this drawn up by Attorney Wenner or...
No, I believe that's the actual social media policy that the mayor had introduced back in 2016. I can tell you that that is not the social media policy that we will be adopting, but it was rather a, it was, I had asked Vicky to put that in there. I can tell you, just by reading over it and studying some case law and discussing with Attorney Wenner, a majority of that is invalid and that's not what we're looking to do.
Because I think one of the things that was mentioned at the last meeting was that the social media policy could not apply to elected officials, which is included in here.
Correct.
Okay. If you're going to use any part of this in this first paragraph where it says the mayor holds, quote, "all employees," it seems like the quotes are inappropriate.
Right. I didn't write this just yet, so you know.
Right.
As a matter of fact, I wasn't even a councilman at the time that this was introduced.
Right.
But when I did read it this morning, I can tell you that you're absolutely correct, Mr. Berson. This, just by, again, by reading it and actually speaking with the attorney prior to, this would be considered unconstitutional, which is not the direction we're trying to take.
So will part of the agenda tonight be for you all to talk about what you want to see included in the social media?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We can then move forward with the discussion between council regarding the PEG channel. And I guess I can start and then we'll each go through like a typical work session. Just to start off, I've been attending council meetings since 2007. It's always appeared as if the town of Phillipsburg has been trying to get the public education and government channel off its feet, which would allow for the appropriate oversight, for the committee, anyway, for the, allow us to, allow them to ensure the appropriate oversight of our communications as well as devising policies and procedures for officially uploading, televising, and posting recordings of our governmental proceedings for public review. Not just the governmental proceedings for council meetings, but planning board meetings and the Shade Tree Commission meetings, should they so choose to take place. I've never watched a Shade Tree Commission meeting, but I don't know anyone who would like to. No offense to Mr. Lynn and the rest of the Shade Tree Commission. My personal opinion is I'd like to formally establish a committee to appoint a volunteer town videographer to record our meetings and/or purchase recording equipment, which would allow for the immediate upload for our constituents to review. Now, I was in discussion with Mayor Kern and they do, they do use a company called Bramco. Then we would no longer need a videographer as we would have the equipment installed. I did speak with the Housing Authority and they would allow us to install it temporarily here. But we would still need to form a committee. It's my intention to have these recordings uploaded to the channel, provided to us by Service Electric. However, being that we are in the 21st century, there are other forms of media that everyone else watches, such as YouTube, our town website, and the other various social media sites. Hopefully, we will have an outline for the PEG committee after tonight, ready for council approval by at least the second meeting in May. That's all I personally have on the PEG channel. I will then go ahead and turn it over to you, Councilman Lutz, for his input.
Nothing right now.
Councilman McVey?
Council President, how many, is there a recommended number of committee members on this?
The majority of, the majority that I had looked at were anywhere between five and 11 members. It would depend upon this, to this council, how many members they would truly want to see. I know initially, and Councilman Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, but you had inherited this when they first came in, and it was kind of like a mock committee, right? Did they, was it five members? Was it, is that what it was, about five members or six members?
No. It was me.
You were the only member?
Yes.
So, being that you were the only committee member, I'm afraid we'd have to dissolve that committee and then replace it with a new one. Would that be okay with you?
Well, yeah. It's, I think generally in the franchise that we have with Service Electric, it just says there is a committee. So I don't think we actually have any statutory basis for the creation of a committee.
Right. Well, I was joking about dissolving you, so.
Yeah, I know.
No, absolutely. But that's what this would do, is we would actually be putting this forward.
That's fine.
We'd be comprising the committee, so.
Yeah. The only, oh, sorry. I didn't mean to take your time. Councilman McVey?
No. I didn't know you were the lone committee member, so I'm just, it's actually sad that...
Yeah, we feel bad for you.
I'm...
But it was like a unanimous vote every time, right?
Oh, yes.
You never were defeated.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been, a few people reached out to me within Phillipsburg that live here that have some expertise in this field, offering, a few have. So I didn't know whether, I'm asking how many people, what it's going to be, if it's going to be comprised of folks with a background in this. Because if we are launching this up, and you are in the field, Council President, that if we are, if we're going to put a product out, it's got to be, and I know this is a very broad term, it's got to be world-class. It's got to be, you know, we have, unfortunately, a reputation, not so much this council, but you know, since we go on the video, folks like to watch, to watch the crash and burn. Recently, like I said, we tried it from day one. We've talked about having civil meetings. So now, moving forward, and we are going to brand ourselves. I just want to make sure that that product is people that are familiar with the videography equipment, in addition to if there are people that can help. At every turn we make, if there is, if there is problems along the way, we have the right people's hands that know exactly how to handle this and what to do, so we don't end up in any embarrassing situation. But I look forward to this.
No, I agree. And just to point out, there would be, let's say we had to go down the route of the videographer, they would be held to the same ethical standards that we just passed with regard to the policy, subject to the very same fines of the municipal ethics policy. But there would be, it would be my expectation that we place into this committee bylaws which would say, you know, there would be no color commentary, right? There would be no screaming. And if you were the videographer, you would not be able to yell. I mean, Mr. Morrisette's been doing this for quite some time. Although I haven't seen his videos, I highly doubt that we would hear Mr. Morrisette providing us with color commentary from the back of the room. If we do, Mr. Morrisette, it's just because I haven't seen your videos, but if you put them up online, I'll watch them. But I would like it to be done in a professional manner because Phillipsburg has been the butt of many jokes over the past few years, and I don't believe that we can narrow it down to just any one individual. So I do believe that this council does act with class, you know, even though we are a governing body and there are opposing views, we will lose our temper at times. But I don't, I'm in full agreement, and that would be one of the stipulations that I would put out there, would be that we would, you know, act appropriately at all times.
It's good. It's the product, I'm really looking forward to the product being put out and how we'll put it out. The committee will discuss where it goes. You know, I believe less is more, so just, you know, a couple of spots where people can view. We actually encourage the folks to still come out to the meetings live.
Correct.
But in addition to if there's various reasons why they can't come out, love to have them have that opportunity to see what we're doing here for the town.
Sure. I believe we could direct them to the website, would actually, would help the website traffic and link, we could have a YouTube, we do have a YouTube channel, from what I understand, and we could link the YouTube videos, we could embed them into the website, and it would draw more traffic. So we could do something like that as well. We could even put the agenda underneath the videos and they could download the agenda while watching. The possibilities are endless.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Davis?
No. I'm glad that the Housing Authority has given us permission to install equipment here. I would ask that if we do have a list of services that are desirable before we would commit to negotiations or contracting with any firm, that we would create a request for proposal with those specifications in order to make sure that we have comparable bids.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We were going to discuss the parking meter fees and the time. Do we still want to do that, Councilman Lutz? It doesn't appear that they are here this evening.
No, it doesn't seem. We asked them to be here, so I don't know what's happening.
We did. So because the parties that we had invited are not here this evening, we will have them at the next work session and discuss that. So if that's okay with council, we will go ahead and skip that and move forward to the social media policy?
Sure.
Okay. This, I remember when this had first come about, like, back in 2016, and I supported the mayor when he had said that the town of Phillipsburg did need a social media policy. I actually, I'm surprised that we didn't have one prior, but I guess Facebook wasn't as big back then. But, you know, over the past couple of years, we've seen a couple of things on our social media sites with, you know, social media accounts used maliciously spread false information, not so much from elected parties, it could be from just parties in the town. We've also seen public comments removed from the town of Phillipsburg Facebook account and our political Facebook accounts. And some of the postings and the posting of replies on the town of Phillipsburg page without properly identifying which town representative is creating the post in. So if someone is replying to me on the town of Phillipsburg Facebook page, it just appears that it's the town of Phillipsburg, but I don't know which party is actually replying to me. It would be helpful to say, you know, if Ms. Kleiner was, if Clerk Kleiner, I apologize, Vicky, if Clerk Kleiner was responding to me in a comment, even though it's under town of Phillipsburg, I would like her to sign her name underneath, so we know which party is responsible. It comes down to accountability. In a recent, in a recent case law, which was Davison versus Luton County, the Board of Supervisors, Virginia federal courts recently ruled that a politician violated individual's right to free expression by temporarily banning him, this person, from her political Facebook page. And if you are a political figure, that is the only stipulation that I believe would be a guideline. And I'm not sure that it's right for the social media policy, might be something that we need to move into the ethics policy. I'm not sure where that would go. I guess we'd have to confer. But the court had also found that the political figure had created a public forum, and because they created that public forum with her official Facebook page, where she had, what she had used frequently to communicate with the public, that the resident did enjoy, and all of the residents had enjoyed First Amendment protections. Therefore, if we, as local politicians, have our own political Facebook pages, we should not, and we are engaging the public, we shouldn't really be deleting comments, according to the case law. No, I know, you know, I've seen it happen, you know, don't want to point fingers, I just want to say that we obviously need to steer the ship in the right direction. This would also apply to our town of Phillipsburg Facebook page. We either allow comments or we don't. Because since we're utilizing the town's social media page to communicate with public, it does appear by law that we cannot delete comments regardless of the content without violating the public's constitutional rights. And because we don't have a social media policy, even if it's found offensive, it has to stay. So, you know, it's, that's concerning to me with children. I mean, I'm sure it's concerning to all of us with children. After reviewing some of the policies put in place in the other New Jersey municipalities coupled with the decisions by the federal court, it's my recommendation that the town of Phillipsburg execute a social media and electronic communications policy that does the following. Clearly separates and outlines the expectations of use with regard to the town of Phillipsburg official social media site and electronic communications, and the expectations of elected officials with regard to electronic communications and to social media usage. Now, again, that's a guideline for elected officials because they kind of do enjoy freedoms, but they are, you can say whatever you want as an elected official, but you can't moderate, is basically what the case law had come back. And I will share these with council. I will go ahead and email them out. I would also ask that we can clearly identify the expectations of our municipal employees only while working in their official capacity with regard to the expected, in their official capacity for the town with regard to the expected appropriate conduct on social media and in other forms of electronic communications. So if they go home that evening and they're on their personal Facebook page, we can't regulate what they say. They can say whatever they want. I don't believe that we should be infringing on anybody's First Amendment rights. There are several models of a social media policy currently in use. There's a few that I had found, New Brunswick, Matutchen, and the township of Wykoff. The most in-depth, which I have found, was to be the township of Wykoff, which I have printed for council review. I guess I'll get that over to Joe for the evening. It does need to be updated with the most federal ruling regarding comments because there was a lot in here with the New Jersey leading municipalities. I'm not sure how up to date it was because it was still claiming that you could have a policy removing comments. And I think according to the case, the federal court case, was that you can only remove comments if they were deemed offensive and you would have to have that outlined in your policy. So with that being said, that would just be my expectation. It's got to be a delicate balance, and at the same time, I think if we restrict the use, I don't know how it's being used currently because we don't have an IT department, but if we could see how many people are actually using Facebook on company time, I know in my company, you know, we do this all the time with a lot of clients, and once we shut Facebook off, productivity's sourced. So I don't know. Maybe that will help the productivity in the town of Phillipsburg. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Councilman Lutz.
Question for definition.
That is, just so you're aware, that is the policy that...
WSJ1.
Yes.
Whatever means what?
I think those are actually just editing marks.
Right. They are just comments used by the program, whoever had used, I believe this is, it's probably word, and they were just editing, these are comments from the editing party.
Changing things, that's all.
Right. This is not the policy that we are putting out. This was the policy.
I just wanted clarification on what WSJ1, 4, 5 is.
Right. They're Josh's initials.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Councilman.
That's all right.
Nothing, Councilman Lutz?
No. We'll wait till we bring it up and see what happens from there.
Right. I want to be fair. I don't want to, I don't want to really crack down on, you know, the public, but I also don't want us to abuse it as well. Councilman McVey?
I find there's a need for this. And it's regression towards appropriate social media practices by our employees, by our officials, officials meaning folks that are not even paid, that are just serving different boards or different things. You're talking to someone that had to live by a very strict set of rules for 27 years, so basically 20 years old to 47, and even that, but even now, I still do that. That's just a common practice for me. So this, to me, is easy. I'm not a, I'm not a fan of folks shooting from the hip while they're employed. I know this is a hot topic right now, as long as we don't violate anyone's rights as, you know, as a citizen. And you said it best, Council President, it is a delicate balance. But we're going to get that delicate balance, and I'm confident of it because, you know, we are a working council and we can figure it out, and we will figure it out with the help of, you know, our council here. We're going to make, we're going to make it work because this, I know the public's screaming for it. I know folks up here on the dais are screaming for it. I'm not so much involved in social media anymore. I personally, as, once I became elected, I stepped away greatly from it, and the only thing I'm doing is just maybe a couple of door pictures or whatever. But it's, with that being said, because, because I know the pitfalls of it, so, but it's also something that is, as a community, as we are trying to rebuild and rebrand ourselves as a community, it's important that we do get involved and push stuff out from our own, from our own voices, because we carry a big voice in our community. So in order to do that, I know personally, if we get something solid here, I would go back on, I would start, I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that I have a set of rules voice in our community. So, in order to do that, I know personally, if we get something solid here, I would go back on, I would start, I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that I have a set of rules to go by and move forward, and I'm comfortable doing that. I personally don't want to put myself or my reputation in jeopardy, even if I think it's right, it could be wrong with what's going on, so that's my standard. This is actually would encourage me to get back and, you know, share what's out there from our businesses and our great community stories, what we're going to have, or such as getting together and asking help on the park. That's, that's Saturday at 8 o'clock at Walters Park, so it's, to get help. So, it's, it's a great need, I'm confident our council will come up with something, and if we have to take our time with it, we will, we'll make sure every I is dotted and every T is crossed, and we'll comfortably move forward, and everyone will have a set of rules to live by. And then from that point, other things we're putting together here on council will fall into place to keep this into checks and balances, and then we have a decent system moving forward.
I agree wholeheartedly, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Davis?
Yeah, I think it's, it would be beneficial for us to adopt guidelines and suggestions in terms of the way that a council conducts itself. I also think it would behoove us in terms of codifying rules for the use of the name of the Town of Phillipsburg, in terms of making sure that only authorized parties are doing that, and unauthorized parties are not speaking as if on behalf of the Town of Phillipsburg. But I'm also wary of fuzzying the bounds between the executive and legislative authorities of our offices. I feel like there's a lot of things in this social media policy that should be adopted by the mayor's office, but that should be specifically in the purview of the mayor's office as an administrative function as opposed to a legislative action.
For clarification, Councilman, you're saying that the mayor's, I believe the mayor's office should be used for enforcement, or do you mean for like policy guidelines?
Yeah, so in terms of administrative action, my understanding is that in terms of like workplace rules, social media policy being one of them, authoring and execution would be in the mayor's domain, but I could be wrong about that, and I'm glad to be corrected if I am incorrect.
To be quite honest with you, and I, I will, at this point in time, I would have to defer to council if they're aware. The council, Joe, are you, could you answer Councilman Davis's question?
In terms of personnel of the mayor's office...
Yeah.
As far as I'm aware, the personnel matters are in large part within the purview of the mayor, with the advice of council. So I think there's sort of a delicate balancing act between both of them. But, but yeah, I think that the mayor does have authority over what the personnel issues are, which would probably include enforcement or some of the drafting of the social media policy.
Okay. Well, I would certainly invite the mayor to do so. I do, I would agree with Councilman Davis that we, you know, we can do guidelines, we could work with guidelines, I absolutely believe that that would probably be best, especially with the implementation of the new ethics policy. I think it would probably be good for us to have guidelines, so, Councilman, I'm not fined, I don't want to be in trouble.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, okay, so we will go that route, and I absolutely, we'd have to just go ahead and send a letter to the mayor, letting him know that this is what we're doing. We would, I would hope that he would want to put a social media policy in effect, especially if we were seeing our employees out there casting Phillipsburg in a negative light. Hopefully he shares that same vision.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a wise thing for any company or institution to have it this time, so I would, we can obviously pass a resolution, encourage the mayor to adopt whatever we discuss here.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilman. Okay. Anybody else, do we have anything else on the social media policy? Okay. The last item is the Recreation Committee. Now, I had sent this out a few weeks ago to Rich to be, to be looked at and to be written, but we had gotten into a kind of like a, we, I overburdened Rich with a lot of work, so much so that he called me and asked me to slow down. That's good though, right? Because that means I'm doing, I'm doing the job you asked me to do. So, I'd like to dissolve the current Recreation Advisory Committee and implement a Phillipsburg Recreation Committee similar to the one that's in existence right now in Blairstown Township. God bless you, Joe.
Thank you.
You're welcome. In the proposed ordinance that you'd received, we would be creating the position of Recreation Director and removing the position of Superintendent of Recreation. The position would still be a mayoral appointment with advice and consent of council, and they would act as a liaison between council and the Recreation Committee. And the reason that would be is because council controls the purse strings that would budget the committee, right? So, it really would be all three parties working together, you'd have the mayor, the council, and then, you know, the committee, they'd have to all work together. As you can see in the proposed ordinance, the duties are no different than what we were doing before, however, the implementation of the committee is more advantageous to the youth organizations and distances the town government from interfering politicizing and/or impeding the workflow of these organizations, which I kind of feel is happening currently, nobody by here that is on this body. Along with the implementation of this committee, I do believe that we have to rewrite Town Ordinances 140-8 and 140-9, as the trial period for the success has been tested, and we had discussed its failure a few weeks ago. We need to ensure that our children are in a safe environment, and at all times, regardless of personal relationships, and I believe that the appeal process, that the coaches, that they do go before, prospective coaches go before, they'll go before the Recreation Committee, and not a handpicked group of individuals. I do, I have my personal feeling on the individuals that are performing the appeal process, and that's, it's very, very money for me. So, that's how I feel about this ordinance. I did have it distributed to all of council, because it is a work in progress, and I would like to hear what everyone has to say over the next couple of weeks. It's not something that we have to put on for the next agenda, but we do need to do something, and we're finding ourselves in a spot that we've, we've never been in before with regard to, I mean, actually, we have been into this position last year, but things went differently. This time last year, we had no one filling the Superintendent of Recreation position, and we were still able to have the fields ready, we were still able to have baseball season, and everything was moving along. I don't know what happened this year. So I do think that this, this is the answer to pulling away, I'm not a big fan of big government, government having to watch everything, I do believe that we need to pull away, these youth organizations do share their own autonomy, I know they are covered under the insurance, and we were, myself, I know Ms. Timberman, you were in the audience that evening when we were discussing the insurance, and the council, who I believe was President John Lynn at that time, had promised before the vote that the organizations, the youth organizations, although coming under the umbrella policy for the insurance, would maintain their autonomy. I still believe they should maintain their autonomy. These youth organizations, they have their own boards, they handle, with, with the exception of the criminal background checks, they handle their own discipline, they do suspend their own, they do handle everything internally. But we also could go the route, since we would be budgeting and providing monies to this Recreation Committee, we could set up the system where they could still maintain their autonomy, the registration fees like Forks Township would come to the Town of Phillipsburg, and every time they needed something, they would come to the Town of Phillipsburg, and we would then disburse them a check, that would do away with the stipend system. The truth is, I don't have enough input with regard to the recreation workings here in town, the numbers, to know whether or not the money we have put out with stipends, the reg fees, the, with all of the costs involved, whether or not we'd be taking a loss or we'd be making. But I do know that if we do something like this, it benefits all of the children in the Town of Phillipsburg, right? Because we have, we can waive fees, we have great relationships with Northwest Cap, there's grants out there that we can get for the children who can't afford to play sports, we have a little bit more leverage than the organizations, okay? At the same time, I don't want to have to police the organizations either. I don't believe that, you know, with, with Councilman Davis running the track organization, I don't want to, you know, I shouldn't have, as a councilman, be able to call him up and be like, that's it, your program no longer exists. I mean, I think that's, that would be a horrible thing to do, right? We should pull government away, but at the same time, and I think that's what this committee would do, would act as a buffer. So, and this committee, with the way that it is written, and I believe that we just did distribute it, it's no more, no less than five, no more than 11 members, yes? Okay. Excellent. And with that being said, I will turn it over to Councilman Lutz.
Like you said, I'm not really familiar with the charges and whatnot of the groups. It would be nice to have, you know, we can judge it that way, but I just got done reading this, believe it or not, I read it shortly when I just got it at home, and I read this again, and it's pretty thorough. It's really good, I think it's really okay for us to move on this, you know, move this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, I do appreciate that. By the way, I can't take credit for this, this is the Township of Blairstown, and Attorney Salvador who went ahead and did this for us. So, thank you. Councilman McVeigh?
A couple of things. The staggered, the five to 11, I would personally recommend not going as high as 11, because that could actually muddy the waters if there's too many spoons in the soup. I'd recommend either a seven or a nine, it depends on representation of the organization, probably, and that's the reason why we should really have a committee, is to look at what we have. And my daughter came from the track program, it's a wonderful program, but we're talking recreation, we're talking about, I'm thinking like our major players, like the Still Hills, the Firth Town, and like, my bad, I, so that's what I'm saying, this is why we need a committee to pull, give them equal representation. So maybe, who knows, maybe a higher number would be better, because there's organizations that, that are so little right now, the soccer organization is obviously big, so whatever, whatever we have, it's, it's nice, and it's a repository for sports, youth and sports think tank. It's nice, the committee can come up with stuff that maybe a single person could not see, because doing what they do on an everyday basis may not be able to step by the box and see that from 10,000 feet above. This committee is something like that, it's a 10,000 feet above type of situation. So, I would only recommend that it doesn't get too high, but there's equal representation of all organizations. The terms are staggered, I see, one, two, and three years respectively. If it could be explained to me, it said, I guess that's for the, would that be initially everybody gets on, and then they figure out who goes in those, or would council figure out who goes in those terms?
Correct. So council will then go ahead, and we would appoint them to those terms, right? And the reason we stagger, the reason we start them off with those, those numbers, is because they're staggered appointments, right? So, I can't even read this, except my glasses on, Councilman, see, making me do work. But yes, that's what, that's what that's intended to do, I believe the same thing happened when we did the Land Use Board. Actually, no, I don't believe that that did happen when we did the Land Use Board, everybody who was already on Planning Board kept their same appointment, and then Zoning Board, we only took one member. So, but with other boards and committees in the past that I've seen established, they had started off with the, you know, one-year appointments, three-year appointments, five-year appointments, and then from there, they would give them expiration dates, and they would be staggered, so.
Suggestion, maybe you can have a member of each board from each organization committee?
That is, yes, that's what Councilman McVeigh just said, and that was our intentions.
Yeah, somebody asked about a correction for Falcons.
Excellent. Well, that I did not know, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nicole?
I'm going to disagree with Ricky on that, because I think it should be someone who's actively involved in the organizations, but not someone who sits on the board, because they have their own agenda.
Well, we would, we would ask, and see, that's not for us to decide, that would be, because you are autonomous, right? You really don't want the government, you don't want council telling you who you can and who you can't appoint. If you can pass a background check, and that is who your organization, you know, chooses to put up, and council appoints them, then it would be, you know, that's between your, between yourself and your organization, not you personally, but, do you understand where I'm coming from with that? I mean, you truly don't want us putting our hands in your organization, you know you don't, right? No, I agree wholeheartedly, I don't think that we should tell the youth organizations how they should run, as just as long, I'll get right to you, Mr. Brison, give me one second. Just as long, again, as we're under the understanding, the, I do, I would also, when we went back to rewriting 140-8, 140-9, I want to go back to full fingerprints. The way we're doing them currently, right now, it's not a safe practice, just had a conversation with Forks Township today, although they are Pennsylvania, it's Commonwealth, I know it's different, but the full fingerprint checks provide so much more than a simple name check. So, I know that there was a little bit more of a cost associated, because we used Sage Morpham, or that we had asked them to drive to the hospital, the...
It was in Annandale.
Annandale, right, correct. But coaching, it's not a right, it is a privilege, and I believe if you truly want to coach the children, and you can pass the background check, pay the $30, and sometimes the club gives you back your money.
They reimburse you.
Yeah, they reimburse you. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Brison?
Sure.
Are you mad at me, am I going to get messages later? All right, thank you. Mr. Brison?
So, if you're going to have people actually appointed by their organization, why would you need the staggered appointment times? Would you just say, we'll be, we'll be a representative from these organizations, and it would be up to the organization to decide when, if they need to switch people or whatever?
Well, because we have other members, right, that we'd be placing on the board, and because it's my, and I don't know with everybody else, but it's in my experience, that sometimes you get board members that are on the board for entirely way too long, and they get set in their ways, and things change.
But you were saying that it should be up to the organization to decide who's going to...
From their organization.
Representative.
Well, no, they would, they would choose from their organization who they would like to put up to council for, but council can deny that, that's what that would be. We're not allowing them to just put someone on the board, it would have to come through council's appointment. Okay. Mr. Morissette? Yes?
Do I need to say my name or...
No, Mr. Morissette, we know who you are, go ahead.
What background checks do you do now? I'm just curious, because it didn't sound like you do a real background checks.
Well, that's a good question. The background checks now are done with a blue card, and they're doing, from what I understand, Vicki, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're really just running your name through the system, correct?
Yeah, it still goes to the state police, but...
It does.
It's a name check, we verify the address and everything, their driver's license and information.
Right. But if we were to run the fingerprints, any recent criminal charges would arise, I believe that's how it was explained to me in Forks Township. We weren't, we were doing fingerprints six years ago?
Well, we're doing it up until 2016.
Okay, so we were doing fingerprints up until 2016, I apologize, my coaching card was a three-year card, so that would make sense. But that's what we were doing, but I am a big fan of full fingerprints. As a matter of fact, I just heard your wife speak about background check, thorough background checks last night, and I support her 110%, so.
Okay, I'm just, just a point, where I work.
Yes.
We have higher background checks that are more secure, but just to work at the university, you have to have the child abuse background check.
Same here.
Plus an FBI background.
That's correct. You work in the state of Pennsylvania in a school?
Correct.
Correct. So we serve as schools at my job as well, so we have to pass the FBI clearance check, and, I mean, I think it's three separate background checks that you probably had to take place in yourself, right?
Plus, right.
Yeah, the state of New Jersey's a little bit different, we don't do the FBI background check, but the fingerprint, the fingerprint check with Sage Morpham is all-inclusive, so they are able to tell whether or not you are a, have been convicted of an offense or an arrest, and it does come back fairly quick, actually, it goes right through the system, it's very fast.
So, why would you do, you have coaches that are coaching youth, why would you do less of a background check than would be required to, for you, for a worker to go into a school, even if they're not going to be one-on-one with students?
Mr. Morissette, you're 110%, we are in 110% agreement here.
Okay.
Without a doubt. I wasn't here when the law was changed in 2016, prior to, I didn't have a say, but I, we are in 110% agreement, this, we need to be stricter with our background checks, so.
Don't pull up things like if somebody smoked marijuana when they were 17 years old.
Correct.
That type of thing, as long as it was an adult charge and it wasn't expelled.
Yes. I guarantee you that as part of this process, we want to ensure that our children are all safe with the individuals that are on the field with them.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, Mr. Morissette.
Council President, that was in-house change, not state change or any, that was in-house.
Correct. Right.
I know when I go for my CDO, and I go for my hazmat, I have to have the FBI and state and everything else every four years.
Right, right, yeah. It's just the way of the world. As a matter of fact, like I work in police stations, and I had to be, it's interesting, but I had to be fingerprinted for, to work in that police station. Like Mr. Morissette says, he has to pass three-plus background checks just because he works in the state of Pennsylvania and in a school. I don't think we should be overlooking the process when our children, you know, they're the ones that we're supposed to be, I want to be able to trust my kids when I drop them off to practice. By the way, I'm a helicopter parent, I don't just drop them off, I hang out. But my parents, she's dropped me off, and sometimes they didn't even come back and pick me up. Just kidding, Mom, just in case you're watching. Councilman McVeigh?
Thank you. There's a lot of talk of committee, but just to get this out publicly, there is still the appointment of a recreation now director.
Yes.
And that is, that is by the mayor, correct?
That is correct, it's an appointment by the mayor.
Right, that's under 597. Now, in this stipulation, it does say must be a resident of the Town of Phillipsburg. I have no problem with that, but that is in there, and I just wanted to bring that to light.
That is correct. I think by, we do have an ordinance already that does, that does say, it's like a Phillipsburg first ordinance, and if we can't find anybody in Phillipsburg, then we move out to the...
It should go to county at that point.
Yeah, to the county and to the state.
That is in 1992.
Right.
Right. As long as that's in place, because if we don't have anyone that would fall under the qualifications asked for with this, so like the, you know, in an expedition's manner, go out and continue to find someone, because once we branch out and branch out, this should go, it should take a day, but...
Right.
It's my opinion. And that is, in the absence of, down 599, it's, it then goes, it says, if the director if the director is absent, disabled, disqualified for whatever reasons, the town, we would then have the power to designate an acting recreation director.
Correct. It's just like any other vacancy where council, I mean, listen, council would appoint. But at the same time, that's if the recreation director was going to come back. Now, if the recreation director was going to resign, it would need another mayor appointment because it would have to fall in line with the Faulkner Act.
That's where I was going with this.
Correct. So we can appoint an interim director unless they leave. If they leave or they give notice to leave, the mayor's office then has to appoint and it would come through with advice and consent. The recreation director is still an unclassified appointment.
Correct. And in a perfect world, I mean, no one would ever leave.
Correct.
It would be, in this case, would the committee have a recommendation to put forward to council? Being that we're establishing this as a committee, if that committee came to council with the recommendations? It's like council recommendation, but would it be under the auspice of the committee to come up with a person to be a temporary hold until?
Listen, I believe that anything's possible, quite frankly. And I mean, I would like to think that if we had a council similar to ours, that's very, that we work well together, we're open-minded, that we would be working in conjunction with the committee. And if they did have someone they thought would be best, we would, you know, go ahead and appoint them in the interim, unless, of course, there was an issue. So.
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's a...
Would this also fall into the slight controversy there was as a civil service position and have to take that test?
Absolutely not. This, I'm being careful with how I comment here because I cannot refer to the previous situation at this time. But this would no longer be a civil service position nor posted as a civil service position. This would go back to be a town mayoral appointment. That's correct.
I have a more base question. I'm trying to figure out... Why are you, I can see you having an oversight committee, maybe a committee of the whole. I can see you more efficiently since you put up this local ethics committee. They can do oversight.
True.
And you don't need any committee or anything like that as long as you have ethical oversight and you can use standard authoritative order where the mayor, with your approval, the advice and consent, has his, I don't know the right word, flunk, the flunky who runs the show.
Business administrator.
I'm 78, nine, I lose words. What do you call the boss?
You talk about the business administrator, Councilman Davis, isn't it?
No, no.
God?
Superintendent?
See, yeah, recreation. Recreation guy, the recreation.
Superintendent.
The mayor has a recreation director who then, and with the mayor coming from his background, he ought to have somebody who knows. And you have a committee possibly for oversight and nothing more. Let, let the mayor run, no, not the mayor. The guy you hire run the recreation department, just like it happens in a corporation.
Well, we want to...
With a oversight committee at most, simply to make sure there's no screw-up, like is done in the federal government.
I'm gonna give you this policy to go home with, Joe, this way. Because you see, you do have it. The committee does have a lot more responsibilities than just oversight of recreational organizations. But they also, as you can see, they do planning of recreational events. We have several different committees here in the town, right? We have an Old Town Fest committee. We have all kinds of committees. This would be consolidated right here to this committee. So this would be their job, but they're all, they're not paid. And Joe, trust me.
What do they do?
I want politicians away from the children. Because you see what happens? If we start to fight, we argue, and the kids hurt.
I'm seeing as a local town has a recreation director who runs the recreation department in town, who takes the advice of the people who are heading each of the sub-recreation groups, such as the baseball team, sees, produces a budget for the recreation department, which is looked at by you or an oversight committee that you appoint. And then we have no need for, now...
Well, if you appoint, the oversight committee would be this recreation committee.
Then it would be a big step to undo a whole lot of sub-sense that you already have. And maybe that is the problem. You're so bogged down, you're now gonna have another cog in the wheel with no... Authoritative order, as bad as it is, is the most efficient order you can use. Committees don't rule well.
No.
That's why you have an executive branch and a legislative branch.
Well, Joe, thank you very much for your comment. I do appreciate that. I will take that into consideration.
Consider, yeah.
Thank you.
Throwing out the whole thing and going to an authority.
Well, I'm not gonna throw out the whole thing, but I will.
Well, think about it. You, I'm gonna read this thing.
Yes, Joe. I'll make a deal. I'll think about it. You read it. Go ahead, councilman.
Okay, contrary to Mr. Minor, I am 100% behind this. This is a repository, like I said, of, this is a, this is a think tank and it connects the dots all the way from the children to putting out the product. And I'm excited for our organizations, all of our organizations that have representation and involvement. I'm excited for all of our sports to have involvement and a voice in addition to any type of, like you said, council president, our festivals, our future plannings, our historical events are all gonna be tied into here. And it's gonna be clean. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a nice, like I said, this connects the dots. Instead of having one set of eyes on it, we're gonna have somewhere between 10 and 22 sets of eyes on it. And that makes me happy. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Davis, you've been waiting patiently.
Sure. I echo Councilman McVeigh's sentiment that I think that we need to have representation from all of the youth sports teams. The proposal I'm offering is that we have two classes of voting members be appointed to this board. Council President, I know you had stipulated that the organizations would be able to submit the members that they felt were appropriate, subject to council approval. My counteroffer would be that we have two classes. One, which is a guaranteed appointment, subject to meeting the requirements of the board in terms of background checks and whatever other stipulations that we make that we can't reject except for not meeting those qualifications. And the secondary class that has the same voting rights that's appointed by our board. In terms of the autonomy that we want to afford to these organizations, we want to make sure that they don't feel like they're being stifled. So I think that would be a good compromise for us to strike in terms of making sure they have the voices that they want, as well as making sure that we have people appointed by this board that we think would be good contributors to the recreation community. Secondarily, I do have some concerns about the responsibilities and authorities. I am a big fan of having an advisory committee because I feel like the input that we've gotten from the last two years of working together has been invaluable in terms of steering capital contributions and we should certainly continue down that road. And I do very much enjoy the idea of having an autonomous body that has its own bylaws and actions. I start to become concerned when I see the official purpose and duties, including establishing and administering and regulating recreational programs, specifically the way that this ordinance is worded. It says, and counselor, Blairstown organized the same way? A strong mayor format or is it a different format of government?
It's a definite amount.
Okay.
Councilman, just, so I'm following his hand.
Yeah.
Where are you looking at?
So specifically, just to compare, so yeah, so under 592B, in addition to, in addition, in his capacity as an advisory board of council, it's gonna establish a minister and regulate recreational programs. So the way this ordinance is structured, I think, is contrary to some of our Faulkner obligations. And just reading directly from adoption of municipal charter act, under 469A43, "The municipality shall have a department of administration and other such departments, not less than two and not exceeding nine in number, as council may establish by ordinance. All of the administrative functions, powers, and duties of municipality other than those vested in the offices of the municipal clerk, municipal tax assessor, shall be allocated and assigned among, within, among and within such departments." I think that we are, we're contrary to the Faulkner Act if we abolish the department in its totality and establishes committee to assume its responsibilities.
I don't believe that we would be abolishing the department. You mean the Department of Recreation?
Wait, just sorry, just reading the title says deleting chapter 5, Administration of Government, Article 12, Department of Recreation, and replacing it with a new article, Article 12, Recreation Committee. So I think by default, we are getting rid of Department of Recreation.
We're replacing it, right? So the department is then going to be, basically, the department's going to be the committee.
Yeah.
With regard to the, if I may, just...
Yep, you may.
Section 592, Under Purposes and Duties, Section B, where you had said establish, administer, and regulate recreational programs. I was looking at recreational programs in a broader spectrum, not just youth sports or organized sports, but more or less like, you know, like the Old Town Festival or the playground program, something, because that's really what we're looking at here is we're trying to find a solution that's both cost-effective and effective, right, to the current situation that we are in. I am certainly, with regard to your first suggestion, I'm absolutely in agreement with you. I think it's a great idea. If the rest of council agrees, I would advise Attorney Warner or Attorney Salvare?
Salvador.
Salvador. Attorney Salvador to go ahead and place that into the ordinance. But I don't believe that we're violating the Faulkner Act because although we're deleting, which is in our purview, to delete and replace. I believe, I mean, if you, we can change the name if you'd like, but it'd still be Recreation Department. Underneath it would still be Recreation Committee. Instead of the Superintendent of Recreation, which was a paid position, right? It would be, the committee would be taking place of that position and we'd actually have a director. So you'd have one more buffer underneath.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, I do feel that some of these specific clauses are subverting some portions of the Faulkner Act because as an administrative function, those should, in fact, go through the mayor and we're forcing this pathway to come back to us. I think that there's some things that we could probably tweak on there. That's just my concern about the ground that we're treading right now is that by forming committee and having them report back to us as opposed, but to the mayor's office, we're taking a piece of administrative function for ourselves, which I'm not, I'm not sure is in our authority.
I understand what you're saying, councilman. The recreation director would still report to the mayor. They're just a liaison between the committee and council because council controls the purse strings.
Yeah, I mean...
They would still report back to the mayor.
Yeah, I, that's why I asked about Blairstown and their form of government because it's also specifically stipulates in here that the hours and pay, the pay obviously, of course, being subject to our reorganization time beginning of the year. But in terms of setting the hours of an employee, that would be, the only people that we can do that for are for employees of the council and as the director, they report to the mayor. So I think that we...
That's a good catch. We can strike the hours portion of the ordinance, councilman. I agree. Of course, we do, we do control the salaries. But I believe that would be negotiated between us and the mayor at the time of the creation. We would go out and do a wage comparison, which I believe Vice President DeGraalmo has already done. As a matter of fact, I think one of them is Blairstown Township. Now, I can certainly look up to see if Blairstown Township is the strong mayor form of government. Again, I'm open to, I'm absolutely open to tweaking this. I do believe that this governing body needs to come to some type of agreement with regard to the recreation department. We are, right now, it's been two months. Has it been two months or a month and a half? Can somebody correct me if I'm wrong without a...
April night.
April night.
Summer nights.
So it's been two months. Two months without a replacement. And we are approaching the deadline for the poll. And of course, as we had spoken about, and Nicole, how is it with Steel Hill right now with baseball? Are they, are they ready to go? Are they in the same state that the Furt Town Falcons are in?
I cannot speak on we have the baseball.
Okay, softball.
And I never handed my equipment in last year, so I'm the only person who has equipment.
So you broke the rules, therefore you circumvented the entire process and you still have your equipment. Excellent. Great job, but I don't condone it. Go ahead.
I talked to a couple of members from Steel Hill, Mr. Stettner, tonight.
Oh, okay.
He hasn't been able to be on the field yet either.
Robert JP?
Robert.
Okay.
He said he feels more ready. He just got his equipment, I believe, yesterday.
Okay, so they were just handed their equipment yesterday. And this time last year, you guys had already had your equipment. You were out on the field. Now, I don't know where, where the breakdown was. I do know, though, that they had extra employees at the time. DJ Kofazy was in charge of that and they don't have that position anymore. As a matter of fact, that's a vacancy. So... The municipal, oh, I didn't think about that. Well, he was also the second in command at the youth center. DJ was. I believe he was a director, considered a director.
Yeah.
Not the executive director, but the assistant. And he had managed all of that. But they, they haven't had that position since Kelly Ricks-Morris had left. And that position's been vacant since. But when the mayor's office, and I believe he established a temporary recreation committee, they just got the equipment or just ordered the equipment. From the emails that I can see, I, I gotta tell you, I think he should have took Vice President DeGraalmo up on her offer two months ago to assist because she would have, I know her personally, but she would have had it done. I mean, we all, we worked, you've worked, if you were in a Little Liners program with her, I gotta tell you, she single-handedly runs the Little Liners program. She orders, she distributes, she does everything. I don't know how she's still married, to be quite honest with you. Her husband must never see her. But she is a phenomenal human being when it comes to that. Sure, Josh, you've seen that. You know her better than some of us do. You worked with her.
Yeah, I can confirm she's an exquisite person to work with when it comes to recreational, youth recreation.
So I just wanna, I wanna, obviously, we had an issue this year, okay? I don't want it to happen again next year, a year after, or 10 years from now. This council should be able to do something to protect the children, protect the youth organizations, and move forward, right? There's no looking back. We have to move forward.
Yep.
So, councilman, if it's okay, I absolutely, I agree. We would strike that. We would go ahead and add the two additionals. I believe that would then, up from seven members, councilman, I mean, Councilman McVeigh, that would up from seven members, we would, still wouldn't be able to go over 11. So I would still say some not, no more than, no more, no, less than five, no more than 11. Gives you the, right? And organizations...
Very efficient organizations.
But with Councilman, but with Councilman Davis's recommendation, But with Councilman, but with Councilman Davis's recommendation, we would end up going over that seven limit, that seven-person threshold, because there are organizations in this town, the track organization being one of them. Okay, Councilman, is the track organization covered under our umbrella charts? No?
We're not.
Do you want to be?
No, I'm good. I got U S A T N F insurance.
All right, excellent. All right, Councilman, I'm just, you know, trying to help you. But there are organizations, and I don't know, maybe Pal may crop up in two years, maybe, you know, I don't know, there's all kinds of organizations. Phillipsburg McCross is coming, and then if they want to join, you know, I'd like to extend our hands to these organizations. We need to ensure that our children have something to do.
If I may, Council President.
Yes, sir.
One additional item for that secondary classification of voting rights, I think we should qualify what organizations meet the standard. So, for example, if I start a backyard karate club, which is me and my kids, I shouldn't have representation on the board, and so we should have some type of basis, like, what guarantees an automatic seat on the-
I agree wholeheartedly, but if you do have a backyard karate club, I wouldn't mind coming to attend.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Mr. Brison?
For clarification, according to Wikipedia, Blairstown elects five council members and they choose a mayor from among them.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, okay, so it's not strong mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that would be the weak mayor, former governor, right? Right? Okay, still Faulkner Act, but just not the same.
But a different classification, though, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Brison. Okay, so, with that being said, I mean, obviously, we would tweak this then to fit under the Faulkner Act. I certainly don't want to take away the mayor's power to a point, nor do I want to take away the employees reporting under the strong mayor, former government. The employee does need to report to the mayor. Again, however, I do believe that they do need to work as the liaison between council and the committee, simply for budgetary purposes. Council would not be directing the recreation director on what to do. It sounds, I mean, I have to go back and read through this, but it doesn't, we can make recommendations, just like we can with anything else, but we can't, we can't force a mayor's employee to do, to carry out our tasks, so.
That would make you oversight.
I would not, well, I wouldn't, we can't do that, I don't want to violate the法尔 法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔法尔